Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
I'm going to call this last meeting at the Walford Avenue Property Boardroom to order. Reconvene us into open session and ask Board Clerk John Fullerton to report out from closed session.
On item C1, no action to report. Item C2 was not discussed. Item C3, no action to report.
Board Member Hank Beck will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, we'll move down to information. Are there any student board representatives here tonight? No? Okay. Superintendent's report.
I have several things I'd like to report, starting with Eureka High School's Drive to Stay Alive Service Learning and Youth Led Project was awarded a grant of $82,000 by State Farmers Youth Advisory Board, which Eureka High is one of 64 community organizations to receive this award across the United States and Canada. Congratulations, Eureka High School! In addition, or another fun celebration that I want to let people know about is the Bud Cloney Field Rededication Ceremony, which will be held Friday, September 16th, from 3:30 to 5 o'clock at Eureka High School Baseball Field. Rick Jordan, Eureka High School Principal, has challenged, and Rotary Club of Eureka has accepted, to play a short softball game. The students of Eureka City Schools have and will continue to benefit from the efforts of service groups like our local rotaries. And this Rotary Club was very, very active in getting our field in playing condition again, and have just spent a lot of time and money so that our kids will have a safe place to play. So come help us celebrate. This is for information, I want to let everybody know about back-to-school nights, just to make sure you can get them on your calendar. Washington Elementary's is tomorrow at 5:00. Lafayette's is September 14th. Checking for confirmation. Alice Burney's and Grant Elementary's are September 15th at 6:00. The following week is Zane Middle School on September 20th. And Eureka High's is September 22nd. So just let everybody know, those are our back-to-school nights, which have always been a good opportunity for parents to come and learn a little bit more about their school and their teachers.
Alice Burney's at 5:00.
5:00. Okay, thank you. Oh, Zane got changed to the 28th. Okay, sorry. I had that originally.
So Barnes' off to 10:00 from 4:30 to 6:00.
So Barnes', and what time?
4:30 to 6:00.
Thank you. And what? To the 28th.
Those are all on the tickle file, Mickey?
Yeah, they are. I just wanted to let everybody know how proud we are of the open, the back-to-school nights. I've always really enjoyed them. It's been good opportunities. Everybody get those dates? Okay. I do want to let the board know that the last day for students who have yet, who have not yet had their DTAP shot, which is a Protesin Immunization, is September 23rd. We were granted a waiver, but that is the last date. Clinics are being scheduled at Eureka High School and Zane. Students will be excluded from school without the vaccination or a waiver signed by their parent. Currently, we have 627 students that have not yet been immunized. So the push is on to get these kids immunized. So checking with other districts, it's what we have to do. You know, that's pretty clear in ed code that if they don't have the immunization, or we don't have a parent, or a waiver signed and filled out by the parent, that they will be excluded from school. So Rich's, Dr. Lins has done a fabulous job getting the notification out to parents with letters and now organizing clinics so that kids will have every opportunity, and parents too, to make sure that they get immunized. Pretty important. Also want to say that the District Data Team is scheduled to meet this Friday. This team started meeting last year to address both data director and power school issues. Following this meeting, another meeting with site staff will be held to discuss issues primarily around power school and power school access. Site administrators will forward to the district office concerns that have been brought forward at their site, as well as staff members who would be interested in attending this meeting. Lastly, the California Dental Association has congratulated Eureka City Schools for being only among 15% of districts in the state of California that has consistently supported dental checkups for our students. In particular, our kindergarten students. While the number of students receiving dental care has declined in California, Eureka City Schools has consistently supported our students who received a dental checkup, which then required dental treatment. While the state average is 23%, our average is 43%. So we got a congratulations letter today. And that's for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to board members' reports. Fran?
I should start the other end. The only thing that I've done, because I'm still not driving, I did tour the Marshall Annex, the new district office, on Friday. I'm getting raving reports from my granddaughter on Zane. She absolutely loves it. She loves all her teachers. And Mr. Collier is very funny. Now, I have not heard, I have not heard him say anything very funny since I've known him. So either she has a problem with humor, or I need to stick around with him more. Anyway, she loves it.
Hank?
Yes, I made it over to Zane for their first, I don't know what you guys call it, they used to call it lunch on the lawn. Very successful last Friday. A lot of parents were there at school, a lot of things going on. Did get a chance to see Mr. Smith and Mrs. Lovell down at the auction at the county fair supporting FFA students. Saw Kevin Scheffler down there cooking, in fact, from our other school. And had a, had a good time visiting with the kids and seeing what was going on at the fair. I've been to Eureka High, Grant, and Alice Burney, and I guess there's still a question about getting the smart boards up at Alice Burney. There's a delay until the end of October to get those in place. And, and there are skunks under the classroom over at the Ag building in Eureka High that they've been trying to deal with since July. And it'd be nice to get that done, because it sounds like it's kind of a tough way to start a day. If they could get screens to keep the skunks out, it would even be helpful. So, that's my report.
Wendy?
Can't follow the skunks. I did get a chance to get over to the high school, got to spend some time in the auditorium, looks awesome in there. They had picture day there, so I know it's not open, like officially yet, but we did have the school pictures taken in the auditorium. And I was amazed at how well behaved those kids were filing in. I was there for a number of hours both days. It was like, those kids are really, really well behaved, all grades. I was impressed. And I did get a chance to visit the new district office over at the Marshall campus, and I'm impressed with the amount of work that's been done. There's still a lot to do, it seems like, wow. Hardly recognized it, but I was glad that Charlie Bettini had a few minutes to take me on a tour. And that's about all I did.
John?
Well, my grandson also started Zane, and he's really happy with his school, although I didn't ask him if he thought Mr. Collier was funny. But he and my son are both happy.
That's good. Okay. Well, I attended the Fall Sports Parent Meeting. That was the first one I've gone to. It was quite impressive. A lot, a lot goes into those athletic extracurricular activities. I also went to the Athletic Boosters Meeting. That's what I've chosen to do this year. Last year, I went to PTSA meetings at the high school, and, but another board member has, it's going to be at every one of those. Wendy. So I'm moving over to the Athletic Boosters. And just kind of an FYI to board members, because I don't know if really, this is the first I heard of it. We do have some condition problems with some of the athletic facilities. Apparently, the track is in very poor condition, exceedingly poor condition. And the tennis courts are also, but there's some work being done on that to kind of do a temporary fix. And then the artificial turf issue came up again, but that's a million dollars. So anyway, I will keep you posted on what I hear from that meeting. I also went to the city-county meeting with regard, there were a lot of topics that they, they talked about, the marijuana issue, among others. But the primary one that they were interested with the schools is, of course, the Jacobs property. So I again told them that our next facility meeting would not be until November, sometime in November. And they all wrote that down, so they will probably be calling Mickey to find out. The last item I have, I just, I read the Project Serve report that we got. I'm sure every board member got one. Is that correct?
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of activities that are kind of embedded within this umbrella. And I, I just, what's going to happen to some of these? I mean, there's, it says that service learning's in, built into the WASC plan, and the ESLSR's, and the District Technology Plan, and there's a service learning pathway? Well, where, and maybe the time to discuss this is under the master count, master schedule for the high school? Would that be a good time to?
We can talk about it right now if you'd like.
Well, no, it's better not, because this is not really a discussion item, but, and this report was pages and pages. So there's, was just so much good work done with this program, and I, if we don't have to let go of everything, it would be nice if we could save some.
I would say there's a lot that's being saved.
Okay.
And maybe we just- But I think asking Principal Jordan to report out when he does the master schedule would be helpful for you to know specifically how they're addressing that, and the service learning projects that are going, continuing.
Sounds good. Okay. Okay. That's all I have. So we will move to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. As printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to 20 minutes total, and I believe Mickey will get our-
Light ready?
Light ready. So, our first speaker is Fred Nelson.
Good evening, my name is Fred Nelson. I'm a resident of Eureka. For what it's worth, I'm also a graduate of Eureka High, 1945. I'm here tonight as a vice chairman of the board of the Humboldt Tea Party Patriots. And I'd like to read you a letter that I have here for you. Each of you will get a copy. Part of my organization's mission is to secure public policy consistent with the Constitution of the United States. We believe that the United States Navy has taken a step in the wrong direction with their plans to discontinue their support of the NJROTC program at various schools throughout the United States, including the program located here in Eureka. The NJROTC program throughout the years has provided guidance to many students, leaving them better than thorn as to their direction in life, while instilling a certain amount of patriotism that would be lost elsewhere. The United States military always needs high caliber individuals that are willing to protect and uphold the Constitution. Even though the Navy has sponsored the program, the benefits go far beyond the one organization, as you probably know much better than I. Military recruitment, although more lenient than in years past, is still tough in its finality. NJROTC gives a student a chance to be a part of basic military education with the presence of instructors who are professional military people. The student can better find out if he or she is suited to military training before making a commitment, and still receive a basic education that helps prepare the individual to achieve a productive place in society. If the student decides on another career, the United States still gains a more informed citizen who is better able to appreciate and defend the United States Constitution. With these thoughts in mind, the Humboldt Tea Party Patriots urge you to contact the appropriate United States government officials requesting the retention of the NJROTC program at Eureka High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Jim, can we do it at the end, or do you want to do it now?
So, kids are going to do their homework, can we do it?
Okay, let's just do it. Okay. Hopefully, that's, okay. So, the Agriculture Department would like to introduce their new officers, and we're just bringing, we're going to H4 student board representatives, and they'll- You don't need to worry about that. We're, you're agendized as an H4 item, so.
Okay, just making sure it's kind of overwhelming. Just kidding. Hi, my name is Chelsea Gratz, and I'm the 2011-2012 Eureka FFA president. And last year, I was the school board representative. I'm also a senior this year, and it's my fourth year in agriculture. And this is the Eureka FFA officer team. We, as a team, have been working very hard since June, and have accomplished many activities, and are looking forward to the rest of the activities this year we'll bring.
Hi, my name's Lana Churchill, and I'm this year's Eureka FFA vice president. I am a senior, and this is my fourth year in Ag. We will be having our first monthly meeting on September 21st. There will be an ice cream social at 6:00 p.m., and our meeting will follow with a scavenger hunt. Our ultimate goal of this meeting is to introduce our theme and inform everyone about our program and objectives that comes with it.
Hi, my name is Sarah Holt, and I'm Eureka FFA secretary. This is my second year in agriculture, and this year, I am in charge of the Tred tip lunches. The first Tred tip lunch is the 6th of October. The order funds are due Monday, October 3rd. The cost is $8 per lunch. Warons will, this year, will be providing you with order forms by the next week. We look forward to your orders and wish you, and hope for a successful fundraiser.
My name is Karen Klein, and I'm the Eureka FFA treasurer. This is my second year in agriculture, and I'd like to tell you about our summer officer retreat. Each officer attended a workshop that taught them about their offense and duty. In addition, we interacted with all the officers from the Humboldt film section. There were team building activities throughout the day and reflections at night. All in all, it was a successful retreat, and we look forward to a productive year using this program.
My name is Mark Sakuny, and I'm an Eureka FFA reporter. I'm sophomore this year, and this is my second year in agriculture. On Tuesday, November 27th, we're having our annual reunion initiation from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Ag Department. This is an activity for our new members to participate in. There are team building activities, competitive relays, and all new members get their green hands on the posters and plywood. The evening is topped off with barbecue that both old and new members can participate in. We look forward to seeing you all there.
Hi, my name is Brian Allen, and I'm Eureka FFA senior. I'm a junior, and this is my third year. On September 14th, we will be having our welcome back barbecue at 6:00. And at the Ag, we will be having a hamburger barbecue, and all families are invited, no charge. We would love to see you all there.
Hi, my name is Burke Spencer, and I am the Eureka FFA historian. I am a senior, and this is my third year in Ag. At the Humboldt County Fair this summer, we had seven lamb exhibitors, one steer exhibitor, 16 pig exhibitors, and one dairy goat exhibitor. We all did well in showmanship in selling our animals, making a chapter total of $22,826.50. We would like to thank all the businesses and community members who bought Eureka FFA animals. We all look forward to next year.
Hi, my name is Katie Spillinger, and I'm chief ASV representative, and this is my fourth year in Ag. On September 23rd and 24th, the whole officer team is going through the Chapter Officer Leadership Conference at CEO. There we meet with other chapter officers from the North Coast region, and there we will expand our leadership skills.
Hi, my name is Kelly Pedrati, and I am this year's Eureka FFA sectional secretary. I'm a senior, and this is my fourth year in Ag. In June, several of our members exhibited animals at the Redwood Acres Fair. We had nine pig showmen and five lamb showmen. Everyone who participated did well in both their show and the auction. Eureka FFA members made a total of $13,805.40 in the sale of champions auction on the final day of the fair. We look forward to having the same great experience next year.
Hello, my name is Lauren Raven. This is my third year in Ag, and I'm a junior. This year, I will be the Eureka FFA school board rep, so I'll be seeing you guys more often. This year, we have a wide variety of classes that qualify you for pathways and FFA programs, such as Ag Natural Resources, Ag Art and History of Plural, Ag Leadership, Ag Biology, Ag Geo, and Ag Economics. So far this year, our members have been working toward pathway completions, senior projects, and expanding our SAE projects, which stands for Supervised Agriculture Experience. As the new school board representative, I look forward to seeing you each and every month.
Thank you.
On behalf of the whole officer team, thank you for your time. I will now be giving you our annual program activities.
So, I have a question. Marissa, is it? How many Greenhorns do you have this year? Do you know yet?
Green Hands.
Green Hands?
Green Hands.
Green Hands? How many Green Hands do you have this year? Do we know yet?
Between 35 and 40. If you haven't had it yet, so, I'm not quite sure.
The guesstimate is 35 to 40 new?
Yes.
Thank you.
Green Hands. Green Hands. Okay. So we'll now move back to public comment on non-agenda items. And the next speaker is, I don't need to reread everything, we're back to, it's Brian, isn't it? Brian Nunn?
Good evening, my name is Brian Nunn, and I'm here representing Missions When Possible. Last time I was here, I think it was a little, several years ago, and we were trying to get a high school pool open. We weren't successful there. We did raise some money, and I think we kept it open for about seven months. But we spent the last few years trying to get a pool in Eureka. We've looked all over the county. This summer, we did get the exclusive right to the Calverson Park property in Eureka, right by the Adoring Center, from the city of Eureka. So we spent the last two years basically figuring out how to make a pool sustainable in Humboldt County. And we traveled to Colorado for four days, met with USA Swimming, spent about 14 months developing a plan that would have us be able to have an Olympic-sized pool, an eight-lane pool, a therapy pool. We're going to do two, but Vector is working with the Easter School pool site, so we're going to back down to one. But with Eureka High pool closed, CR pool closed, the Easter School pool closed, our kids and our families and our seniors need some water. Not that we don't have a lot of water around Humboldt County, but our goal is, is, is several-fold. One, to bring a facility, an indoor facility, will be the only one from central California to central Oregon, open to the public. So we'll be able to also have real economic impact to the community. We would like to come at a later time and do a presentation and talk about how we can assist and work with the schools in Eureka. Tonight, we're just asking for a letter of support, and I gave a copy to Mickey. But we really went through, and I think you each have one of our cards that has our contact information. On our website, missionswhenspossible.org, I'd like to encourage everyone to go, there's a community survey there. The grants, we started doing the grants, and they're going in. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation. Our goal is to have a facility and aquatic wellness center here that will be available to all the community regardless of income. And that's going to be a challenge for us, but we think we figured out a way to do that. Not only pay for the facility, but to be able to have a profit at the end of every year that will go back into the community as a 501(c)(3). So we didn't want to be a nonprofit looking for funding every year. We wanted to be able to provide funding-
So, I have a question. Marissa, is it? How many Greenhorns do you have this year? Do you know yet?
Green Hands.
Green Hands?
Green Hands.
Green Hands.
Green Hands? How many Green Hands do you have this year? Do we know yet?
Between 35 and 40. If you haven't had it yet, so...
I'm not quite sure.
The guesstimate is 35 to 40 new?
Yes.
Thank you.
Green Hands.
Green Hands.
Green Hands. Okay. So, we'll now move back to public comment on non-agenda items. And the next speaker is... I don't need to reread everything. We're back to... It's Brian, isn't it? Brian Nunn?
Good evening, my name is Brian Nunn, and I'm here representing Missions Swim Possible. Last time I was here, I think it was a little... Several years ago, and we were trying to get a high school pool open. Weren't successful there. We did raise some money, and I think we kept it open for about seven months. But we spent the last few years trying to get a pool in Eureka. We've looked all over the county. This summer, we did get the exclusive right to the Calverson Park property in Eureka, right by the Adoring Center from the city of Eureka. So, we spent the last two years basically figuring out how to make a pool sustainable in Humboldt County. And we traveled to Colorado for four days, met with USA Swimming, spent about 14 months developing a plan that would have us be able to have an Olympic-sized pool, an eight-lane pool, a therapy pool. We're going to do two, but Vector is working with the Easter School pool site, so we're going to back down to one. But with Eureka High pool closed, CR pool closed, the Easter School pool closed, our kids and our families and our seniors need some water. Not that we don't have a lot of water around Humboldt County, but our goal is several-fold. One, to bring a facility, an indoor facility, will be the only one from Central California to Central Oregon open to the public. So, we'll be able to also have a real economic impact to the community. We would like to come at a later time and do a presentation and talk about how we can assist and work with the schools in Eureka. Tonight, we're just asking for a letter of support, and I gave a copy to Mickey. But we really went through, and I think you each have one of our cards that has our contact information. On our website, missionswimpossible.org, I'd like to encourage everyone to go. There's a community survey there. The grants, we started doing the grants, and they're going in. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation. Our goal is to have a facility, an aquatic wellness center here, that will be available to all the community regardless of income. And that's going to be a challenge for us, but we think we figured out a way to do that. Not only pay for the facility, but to be able to have a profit at the end of every year that will go back into the community as a 501(c)(3). So, we didn't want to be a nonprofit looking for funding every year. We wanted to be able to provide funding for other groups in the community. So, what we'd like to do tonight is ask for a letter of support. Our goal, though, right now is we're securing funding for swim lessons for all the kids in Humboldt County, so that we don't want the schools to have to, within your budget, provide for that. So, we're securing funding for that in the hopes that we'll cover the cost of the lessons and the transportation, so that that won't have to be coming out of the local budget, because the budgets are a little tight right now. And so, we wanted to provide that and let you know that that's where our goal is. So, although it will take three or four years between the State of California and the Coastal Commission to get the project, and we are securing funding for that now. But my last comment is, in looking at what President Kennedy, John Kennedy, said, he said, "The efforts of the government alone will never be enough. In the end, the people must choose, and the people must help themselves." So, we appreciate the time, and that's what we're going to do. And we ask the city of Eureka to kind of unleash the most important asset, which is the people, so we're going to do that. So, we'd just like to ask for a letter of support. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Patrick Riggs.
So, you have three of us to...
One, two, three.
So, some of this may be a little shorter, and some of this may be a little longer, but we'll come in well within the 20 minutes of this topic that you had.
Last night.
I'll let it go.
My name is Patrick Riggs. I teach second grade at Ellis Burden School, and I'm President of the Eureka Teachers Association. These are some of our members who've come to show their interest to you tonight. It seems that every time there is a contractual issue to be negotiated between ETA and the district, we have to show up here, I guess the last time here, it's inevitable, I suppose, over and over again before the district will begin to take us seriously. Last year, we had to find and show you the money you claimed for months that you didn't have, but actually didn't. That was a 14% reserve. And we had to go out into the community, educating parents and the public at large, before anyone at your table would listen. And what was the outrageous demand we must have made to precipitate such entrants on the district's part? Financially, next to nothing. There was no salary demand. The only monetary issue was health insurance. And there, we traded down plans to save the district money. The issues were interim superintendent Lanning's desire to destroy over 30 years of ETA and ECS, bargain agreements, collectively bargained agreements, and her desire to cut our salaries by huge percentages. The fact that once again, we have to be here tonight is a direct result, and I'm sorry to have to say this, but I do, of a failure of leadership in this district to do its job properly. This time, the issue is health insurance once again. The Lanning administration refuses to fund the increase in medical insurance costs for our members for the coming year. For Plan C, for the total of our membership, this amounts to about $142,740. If the district were destitute, there might be a good reason to have this consideration and this concern. But that is far from the case. Once again, we've looked at the money. There is an $8.5 million carryover from last year, a beginning balance. That represents 25% of the projected expenditures of the district for this year. You could say a 25% reserve. There is in addition, a $1.4 million unrestricted special reserve, a $1.3 million beginning balance and capital outlays, for a total of $11.2 million in beginning balances and special reserves, without even looking at the transfer account. And you compare that to $142,000 in costs. If the district... So, if district leadership will not miss it again, we know what to do. And we're getting pretty good at it. We will be here. We will publicize the financial reality. We will go to parents and to the community at large, and we will ask them, once again, to come to you. We will stand up for fairness for our members. We will not quit.
Does it start?
I need you.
Hi, I'm Katerya Perre. I teach math at Zane, and I'm bargaining chair of the union. Dear Board, today I spent $56 from the dollar store in my classroom. I do this commonly, as I'm sure all teachers do. This money goes directly to the students and doesn't come out of the ECS budget. I could buy all my supplies from the warehouse, but if I see a deal, I just buy it. So, today, I saved ECS $56. But ECS seems to feel that teachers should divert paycheck money into healthcare premium money. I think that they feel we shouldn't expect to have fully paid benefits. What they are not remembering is that we do pay for our healthcare benefits. ETA understands benefits cost money. When we negotiate, we talk with the district about total compensation, which combines salary and benefits. Last year, we changed our plan so it would cost about the same as the year before, resulting in no increase in total compensation. In order to do that, ETA members pay more out of their paychecks in higher deductibles. And this is not the first time we have done that. Last year, ECS agreed to negotiate this year's increase with ETA. We don't find out the increase until July, but on August 12th, they refused to negotiate. It is their right to refuse and decrease our total compensation by $61 per month, but it is our right to organize. So, here we are, and here we will be, until we convince the board to send their bargaining team back to the table and negotiate with ETA. Maybe the board enjoys our company. But time spent here is time spent away from our job of teaching Eureka's kids. And diverting money from our paycheck to pay for healthcare premiums will likely mean that teachers will spend less of that paycheck in the classroom and divert ECS's budget from paying our premiums to paying for these supplies. The result is no savings to the district, an increase in red tape, and a decrease in morale. Stop this nonsense and negotiate the increase on September 19th and get us back to the job we love. Thank you very much.
Before the... Oh, it's on. Testing. Before the clock starts, I'd like to say I'll miss Walford afternoon. There's part of this I have enjoyed. It all comes full circle. Almost 20 years ago, I stood at this spot with my little daughter by my side and addressed the school board for the first time over the very same issue, co-paying for benefits, my union baptism. Since the early 1990s, I have spoken here many more times on a variety of issues, but not this one. Over that time, the association and the district have always found ways to cover the cost of employee benefits without having to ask for direct employee contributions. We have redefined benefits as salary as total compensation. We have changed plans. We have accepted different deductibles and co-pays and altered coverages. We've been flexible, and we've bargained. What we've established is a past practice of fully covering benefits for the teachers and retirees of Eureka City Schools. It's a tradition we should be proud of, not something that should be targeted. The reason I fear it is targeted to be a thing of the past is the behavior of the bargaining team during the last bargaining cycles. I thought you had learned a lesson after the last contract negotiations that trying to ram your desired outcomes down our throats was just not the way to properly bargain. It strengthened our resolve, taught us to organize even better, created animosity, and in the end, reflected poorly on the district and the board. I was taken back when we met this August to discuss the changing benefit rates. ETA came to bargain that day. You did not. You were obviously intent on setting a new precedent, one that would have teachers paying into their benefits. You seemed to pride yourselves on the fact that you hadn't even done the calculations to see what the cost increase would be. Pardon my thinking. But when you have an interim superintendent with a tremendous attention to detail and a certified public accountant on your bargaining team, and you don't even take the time to figure the cost of a benefit increase, then there is something bigger going on. And I fear the same pot political poison that is anti-union, anti-social services, and eventually even anti-public education is starting to steep in. We asked your business person, Paul Ziegler, to give us information in order to do the calculations. You chose not to. Mr. Ziegler told us that last year, there was 202.3 FTE, and that this year, at the start, we know it could change, he said that, there was 194.6. The difference, using his figures, 7.7 FTE. If we use, say, $60,000 as an average total compensation, that would mean that our unit cost for this year has dropped over $400,000. While we figure, just by losing 3 FTE, you could easily cover the increase in benefits. I know $61 a month for everyone is hard to find. Look how hard it was to see the $10 million last year. Had we sat down and bargained in August, we would have begun to look at the numbers and the solutions. Instead, we were told that we could take a cut in our total compensation. We could only bargain if we were willing to accept less. Then I got a threatening letter, which was not only misleading, but simply untrue. This was your choice on how to welcome our unit back. You want to work together? We'll work. You want to bargain? We'll bargain. You want to fight? We'll do that, too, because we got nothing to lose, except our compensation, our benefits, and our work conditions. You choose the path. You know who you're dealing with. We are teachers. We are working workers. We are community members. We are voters. We are ETA. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else with any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move on down to the consent calendar. Are there any questions or concerns with the consent calendar? Not unless you pull it.
Then I want to pull it.
Which... Okay. 11. Okay. So, we'll pull it. Is it just a minor correction? Or is it...
Not a correction.
Okay. Okay. All right. I have a question on J9, page 4.
That's the same.
On my copy, on the last bulleted paragraph, there's like a line through this... Is that sentence not supposed to be there?
Yes.
It's not supposed to be there?
Right.
Right. Because I didn't think the amount of money was correct.
Correct. That's why we struck it.
Oh, bummer.
Okay. Yeah. I knew it's a lot more.
It is a lot, yes.
I wondered what the problem was.
I think it said $35,000.
Yeah. Yeah. I think so, too.
Probably, but not...
We didn't see it.
Okay. So, it's approved with the correction, is what we'll do. Okay. Anything else on consent agenda?
Just on page 6. Kay, what is it? No, it's...
Page 6?
J9 again. It's still the minutes. Page 6.
Where am I? Yeah. Middle of the paragraph, it says, "All asbestos and lead abatement has been..." I think that's supposed to be LEAD.
Where are we?
Where... Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm page 6. L23.
And it's still the minutes. Yeah. Okay. So, that's still J9. Okay. Is that it? All right. So, do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar with the corrections to J9 and without J11?
So, I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar with the corrections to J9 and without J11. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. So, we'll move to discussion action and look at J11.
My question has to do with the Zo Barnum master schedule. There's a common prep for all teachers last period of day. So, is anything offered to the students or not during that period of time?
Page 34.
Page... Yeah. Could you... Okay. Page 34.
Page 34.
So, Hank, would you restate your question again? I'll do my best to answer it.
Are there any classes, activities offered to students during that period of time?
Not classes, but there would be activities. I know last year, for example, they had a basketball team, but it was recreational only. Typically, the students have been leaving prior to lunch. This is actually extending their opportunities for educational classes after school. And what we wanted to do is to provide a common prep for the teachers so that they could really look at their instruction and curriculum. And then what we also did is we spaced out the transition periods for kids that are either coming into or coming back to Zo, that go through that transition class.
The history of the two-prep system for an eighth-period day was based on students being there already.
Right.
And so, that's where my question came from, if we're not offering students classes during that period of time.
And...
Apparently, we're not.
Correct.
This schedule doesn't cost more for our Zo Barnum? Or is there kind of a combination? We've got Humboldt Bay kids coming... I mean, how is that...
I would say it actually offers kids more educational opportunities. What we found, at least last year and the previous years, Zo has done some tweaking of their schedule, where the majority of their students are actually leaving about 12, 15. 12:15, 12:20, with only students that were in the transition class staying, or for those students that wanted to do some additional credit recovery. So by redoing the schedule as proposed, it actually increases the day for the majority of students to be actually in classes. In addition, it was to look at the increase for, of students projected with the closure of Humboldt Bay. They felt it was also, my understanding, staff felt it was very important to have a common prep. That provides them the opportunity to collaborate and really work together on providing a rigorous curriculum to kids.
Is there any busing in the afternoon now, or is the bus morning in the 12:00 period?
The busing hasn't changed. So the primarily, the majority of kids do leave about 12:20-ish, if I had to say that right. But kids do take the city bus a lot, or they do, you know, they ride their bikes, or they have cars or vehicles. But our busing is still around 12:20, I think it is, 12:15, 12:20. It's after the five periods.
So I'm getting the impression that this is, I mean, staff put this together.
Correct.
This is what they would like to try and see how this works. I mean, it's essentially trying something new, or new-ish.
They're offering additional opportunities for students. As a continuation of high school, the minimum day is 180 minutes. And so as LeAnn indicated, there's a, most of the students leave at 12:20, they're there for the prescribed minimum day for continuation of high school, 180 minutes. And by extending the day this way, by adding periods, they're, the staff are able to provide additional opportunities. So that we're in fact able to say to some of the kids that come in through the CAP committee, for example, they want to come back to Zo Barnum because they've been at the community school, and they're very far behind in credits, if they get their nose to the grindstone, they can earn about a year and a half worth of high school credits in a year, and some of them even a couple of years, because they take advantage of both sessions, morning and afternoon.
Has that changed? Did it's 180 minutes a day, or is it still 15 hours per week?
Couldn't answer that question if it's one or the other.
Historically, it's been 15 hours a week since 1990.
We'd have to get back to you on that one.
There's not a minimum requirement.
Hmm, I think there, I don't know, I, you know, only, I would say two years ago, we ran into the fact that we might not be having enough instructional minutes for ADA purposes at Zo Barnum. Because I know, one of the reasons why we started extending classes after lunch was to make sure that we did. I couldn't tell you the specifics of what that change is now, but I do recall conversations back when Michelle Hutchins was the principal there, that we needed to do this extension to meet that instructional minute requirement for ADA purposes. I don't, not for credit purposes. So I would need to get further clarification. I can certainly do that and bring it back to the board if you'd like, but.
How many students, I guess where I'm confused is if they're all, the majority of them are leaving at 12:20, in that lunch period, then how many students are in those period six and period seven classes?
They're actually hoping by the way they've structured that the students choose to stay longer.
Okay.
And get their extended day by the, one of the reasons why they, they found that when they did the transition classes primarily after lunch, they were having difficulty, having a significant number of kids, they were averaging six to eight to maybe 10 students in those periods, which is why they wanted to stagger transition throughout the day, and then have core classes or elective options after school in hopes to encourage students to stay longer, so they can have more opportunity to earn credits, like Dr. Lentz said. In addition, you know, they really are working collaboratively with Eureka High School to make sure that they're aligned and utilizing the same textbooks and similar pacing in their classes. So certainly the classes, I would say, the rigor has changed. So to me, it's really trying to provide a more comprehensive program for our continuation high. Part of, it was in response to Humboldt Bay closure, we wanted to make sure that kids felt that they still had more of a comprehensive-like program, because Humboldt Bay kids stayed all day, where the Zo Barnum kids the last couple of years really were leaving at noon, or earlier.
Noonish, okay.
I have a question on the Zane scheduling.
Okay. Page number?
Oh, page 24. Remember last year, there were discussions about not doing the deer, drop everything and read, which is 18 minutes out of the fifth period? And my understanding was that they were going to stop doing that, and here it is back on this year's schedule. Is there anybody here from Zane that can answer that question?
It's not 18 minutes from the period, it's in addition.
It's 18 minutes out of the school day.
Right.
That the kids read on their own, with no other instruction going on, other than they have a book and they're reading.
Right.
And I understand numerous conversations with many teachers, that the statistics show that that's not the most effective use of 18 minutes out of every single school day. And both the principal, last year and assistant principal, had told me that there would not be a deer this coming school year.
Well, I have no idea why there was. Because we're all talking. There is no reform of the year.
The only communication that I received is that the schedule would be the same as last year, and I was not aware that they had made a statement like that.
It was, and I'm not sure, I would have to go back and ask again, the person that is still here, that that was the intent, because that was what I felt, I was told.
You were going to try to do a whole bunch of things with the schedule?
Right, yes.
Right?
Yes.
And the teachers voted.
They did not approve it.
He just asked for too much. Can we be honest? He just kind of asked for too much. You know, he didn't just go, okay, let's get rid of deer, and send a day, a couple minutes, we had five minutes to a period, I think pretty much everybody was on for that, but he wanted 15 minutes longer on every period or something, and extend it, start the day at seven, or at like.
So it wasn't as simple as just reshuffling and putting the minutes back into each class?
He just gave up.
Okay.
When the teachers voted it down, I think it was just.
Thank you, okay.
Schedule wasn't, it'd be very easy to add three minutes to a period. Every period is a, just by, oh, man, years.
Okay, so, and if we approve this bell schedule for tonight, then this is how it will stay for the rest of the school year.
Well, no, at any time during the school year.
They could come back to the board for a revision.
So, we could ask, as the new staff.
Come on board, they could come back and.
And you're mentioning this to Rich, this seems like this comes under your kind of.
Right, the reason that this item is presented to the school board to begin with is to ensure that we are providing the minimum required numbers of instructional minutes.
Right.
At all of our schools.
Mm-hmm.
And the backup information is to demonstrate, this is how we meet the minimum instructional minutes. But this is not to say that we can't change it.
Correct.
Okay.
So it sounds like I'm hearing that you'd like it to be revisited.
I would like to look into the possibilities of maybe changing that.
Okay.
We can bring that back.
Troublemaker.
Maybe we could have that conversation when we do the master schedule, maybe that could be a part of the conversation when Zane brings.
I think that's sort of why I was asking now, because I know we haven't gotten the master schedules.
That'll be on the next.
And they're probably working on the master schedule, so maybe this could be addressed prior to presenting the master schedules.
I think we have that scheduled for the next board meeting, don't we, the master schedule, so.
I'm pretty sure they're probably well.
I would say the master schedule's pretty set right now, but that doesn't mean that minor changes to what I would call the bell schedule could be made based on reconfiguration, which wouldn't necessarily change.
I'm not sure.
What periods there are, what courses are.
This is a minor change.
Some would not, you're absolutely correct.
And I've accomplished what I needed to accomplish if somebody, if you were going to look into this and see if there's changes that can be made to that.
It can be part of the conversation with the master schedule, though we will have some new staff, so they probably can best.
Okay.
Okay, so, anything else on this agenda item?
Move to approving J11.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2011-12 bell schedules and instructional minutes for all Eureka City Schools. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we are, now J12 was done, we are now to K18, Eureka City Schools 2011-12 Vision and Goals.
And I'd like to recap for folks, is that we, when, at our last board meeting, we spent a considerable amount of time at the special board meeting, reviewing our vision and goals. We did a lot of really good conversation and work on crafting revisions to the goals and sort of what I would call the objectives underneath. We got through everything but these three. So these are basically what we need to look at tonight and continue to make suggestions so that hopefully we can, we can come to, you know, understanding what it is that we want those three items to say. So, do you want to start with, it would be page 72 to C?
Oh, we want to go to.
Unless there's questions on the parts. What we did is we took the corrections and suggestions and included them in what you have in your board packets. And then in the italics is the, are the ones that we didn't get to, or we didn't get to complete.
Can I?
Absolutely.
Page 71.
Mm-hmm.
Just under D, the first bullet in which we're talking, we use Eureka Learning Center, obviously we'll change that if we don't choose that to be the name.
Correct.
Because this is coming, the name change is coming up to our next board meeting, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and then, no, I'm good. If everybody else is good with E, I'm good with E.
Under C, the implementing strategies such as avid. As I read it again, for people in the public, throwing acronyms out there.
So we need to, okay. Quantify the word strategies.
No, avid. What does avid mean?
Oh, you want to spell out the, okay, because I was wondering what, what kind of a strategy would that be?
I would suggest, I would suggest you spell it out and then put this behind it.
We'll spell it.
Avid. That way, people will hopefully get used to knowing what avid means. Otherwise, they won't come up with the acronym, and they won't understand it anyway.
Absolutely, I've got, now I've got the opposite on the next page.
Okay.
72, up at the top, where we, under F, where we list positive behavioral interventions for students.
And then in parentheses.
Parenthesis, PBIS, because I know we're going to refer to it with, it'll become PBIS the more we talk about it.
What page are you?
Page 72 at the very top bullet, and where, under F, it says, implement a district-wide behavioral support system. And so we'll put a parentheses, PBIS.
Can we put date too?
Oh.
We can, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You missed one.
Because that's what we most.
Absolutely.
Those are the most common acronyms that we use to describe.
Positive behavioral interventions and supports.
And supports, okay. Thank you.
What?
Positive behavioral interventions and supports.
Not for students.
Correct, it is for students, but the students isn't in the title. Thank you for that clarification.
And support. So then we are down to C and D, and what do we want to do with them?
Correct.
Is that correct?
And then we also have one on the following page, G, but anyway, we can talk about C. And the conversation that I, from what I recall, I brought it forward because I wasn't exactly sure what the intent of that particular item was under communication. And then we had conversations about, is that really a superintendent's responsibility, or should that be site responsibilities, or do we need to more clearly articulate what it is that we're intending? And we were having good conversation, but we didn't.
We didn't finish.
Correct.
And I'd like to go, I went back to the minutes from the July 27th meeting, which was page three, and this, the last paragraph, which says, under the self-evaluation and communication that we worked on, we talked about, establish a process to regularly inform the community about the financial health of the district. A more detailed discussion on public relations and communication will be included in the 2011-2012 goals.
So we're doing that.
When I, when I read these two, it, to me, just doesn't address.
I take them out.
What, what I believe, and I don't, is the key part. I mean, we, at your level, superintendent level, we need some kind of a process put in, we need to do more than this, in my opinion.
Right. So more of a quantifiable process to, for communication, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not quite sure what you want.
Well, we talked, we talked about that we don't do a good job of this. And then in the past, we've, we talked about the hiring somebody. Then that kind of didn't work out. So I don't know, but that, maybe we need another discussion. I, I don't know, what do we want to do about communication?
Communication.
And, and public relations and, I don't have an answer, I don't, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a discussion, it's.
And D kind of talks about communication, but it doesn't say communicating what? Financial health of the district, and I mean, that's kind of one of the things that I'm hearing, is that we need to do a better job communicating specific topics, such as financial?
That's part of it. I, and my specific issue is that we need to do a better job of keeping our webpages, our website updated.
Right.
But then we, at one time, we had a discussion about.
Right, which is A.
Right, we did that.
Yeah, so, at least for the webpages, we addressed it, but.
I wouldn't say remove C altogether.
And we talked about that.
It just, to me, it's.
Remove what?
C.
D?
C.
Z? I think so too. Either that, or we have.
It doesn't say anything. It doesn't really say.
I think that's the point.
It doesn't, either that, or we sit down and have a discussion when we have some time to really discuss.
What we want to say.
What we really mean, communication.
Because this doesn't do it.
Because I think to sit here and try to hash it out now, maybe we need, maybe we need a half an hour, maybe we need 45 minutes to really talk about.
There's nothing wrong with D. It seems like D, I, I would be in favor of eliminating C.
And keeping D.
And just keeping D, because to me, it just says, it's just forms of communication. So whatever your topic is.
If we did do that, though, I would recommend changing including town hall to such as. Because if you don't, if you don't have a town hall meeting.
Then you haven't met your goal.
Right, and if you, if you don't have, I mean, how often do we advertise on the radio? Or how often do we put anything on the, if we don't?
Occasionally.
Then we haven't met the goal.
Kindergarten registers.
But such as would be much better than including.
I like that. I do, I do, okay.
And then just remove C.
Okay, well, I would certainly support that as our recommendation.
So we're eliminating C.
C, yes.
And on D, we're removing including and using the word such as.
Such as, yes.
Okay.
And I hate to be a stickler, but one other, I don't like the et cetera. Either stop it, or define it.
I think since you said such as, which doesn't mean necessarily it's an exhaustive list, you no longer need it.
Good.
Right.
I would take it out.
Yes, okay, I agree.
Good catch. Okay, anything else on, on that page? Last page?
Is G. And we just ran out of time for this one, I'm not sure we really discussed it much at all. You know, we did have all but, a few of our administrators and their secretary's assistants go through the breakthrough coaching model, and the primary purpose for that really is to increase instructional leadership by administrators being able to get in the classroom more, but also to increase efficiency of both the assistant as well as the administrator. So I wanted to make sure. as well as the administrator. So I wanted to make sure that we continued with utilizing some of those strategies so that we become more efficient. We've always talked about, you know, we need to work smarter, not harder, or whatever that saying is, which I'm not really.
This is one of the few statements that says something.
Well, good.
Specify.
This says we're, we will utilize it.
Right. And it would be pretty demonstratable, because if we're getting out in the classrooms more, then we can. Tally that up.
Will.
So is it okay as is?
Good the way it is.
Yes?
I don't like the last, increase efficiency for both. What does that mean?
For both people, for both individuals.
For secretary's and assistant, I would just.
Put increase efficiency?
To increase efficiency would, would make more sense.
To increase time for administrators to be in the classrooms and increase.
I think part of the reason why.
Efficiency.
Efficiency, it, really, both people learn more efficient ways to do business. And as well, together, they learn more efficient.
And that was efficiency of both.
How about increased efficiency?
Of both?
And time for administrators to be in the classroom.
Okay, so, increase efficiency and time for administrators to be in the classrooms?
Oh, I see.
Put it first.
You just reversed them, Nikki.
Is that what you did?
By increasing efficiency, we're going to have more time to be in classrooms.
That works.
That makes more sense to me.
Wow, good job. Smoother sentence.
Yes. Any other questions about that?
Okay, so, this is a, and a discussion action item. So are, is the board good with the corrections? And we could adopt these goals with the corrections? And are you comfortable doing that? Or do you want to bring it back to the consent calendar of the next meeting? Which we can do. Do that.
Let's just approve it tonight.
Yes.
With the adjustments.
I think, I think we can.
Make the motion.
I move that we adopt the Eureka City Schools 2011-12 visions and goals with corrections.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2011-2012 vision and goals with corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we move down to K19, approval and execution of countywide agreement pertaining to inter-district attendance agreements.
And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Lentz.
Okay. The, I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that the next two items, this one and the next one, are really, and originally, we were thinking about having just one action presented to the school board, but as we understood this better, we realized that it's better presented to you as two separate items. The first item, K19, for discussion and action, is to approve and execute the countywide agreement pertaining to inter-district attendance agreements within Humboldt County. Now, this is required by a new law that became effective January first, 2011. I should restate that. The countywide agreement is not required, but what is required is between any two school districts that enter into an inter-district agreement to allow students who live in one attendance area to go to school in a different attendance area, we're now required to have our own special agreement. Every single school district that has an inter-district permit has to have an agreement. So instead of having thirty-three agreements floating out there, the County Office of Education, Steve Hartzell, Kim Cobine, brought together the superintendents, and they did a lot of background research to come up with a proposal to have one master agreement. And they're asking that all the school boards in the, in the county approve this. Then, that makes everybody legal. When we have inter-district agreements between Freshwater, or Cutton, or, or Garfield, or wherever it is in the county, this one master agreement takes care of all those other inter-district permits. So we are asking your approval of this inter-district agreement. And the same agreement is being brought to the school boards throughout the county during August and then during September as well. It, it's very basic. It has been legally vetted by Steve Hartzell and Kim Cobine. And it is missing attachment A. And Judy, thank you for drawing my attention to that. Attachment A is a list of all the districts. And the reason that we, we don't have that here is because this action has not yet been completed. After each district school board approves the master agreement, then the county will compile that list and forward to each of us the final document, which we will then sign. And it will become an agreement throughout the county. The permit is, I think it's wonderful because it is a uniform permit then, that we'll be working with. Every district throughout the county will have this same permit to work with.
Is it three-year?
Questions? Yeah, it is intended to be through 2015, the 2014-15 school year.
But you have to do it every year, according to that. You have to read, sign with the.
Students.
The students.
Students.
Have to do it.
Parents or whatever.
Are, under the master agreement, they, they wrote it so that we can be flexible. So that the, the default setting is students have to reapply each year. However, if two districts agree.
Then they don't.
They can make it a longer term.
Okay.
If the superintendent of Freshwater and our superintendent agree that because the nature of, whatever, students that we're talking about, a three-year agreement would be desirable, we, we can write that in. And, and it could be a longer agreement. Otherwise, it's an annual reapplication.
So.
What if that agreement doesn't, what if you do a three-year agreement? It seemed to me it said in here, if you did like a three-year agreement and then there was a change, or something different happened, or decided, one, one decided they didn't want to continue, then you had to reevaluate it, right?
The, yes, you.
It doesn't, it doesn't, in other words, if you sign the three-year agreement, it is set in stone. It's, you know.
You can't come back and, and request a modification.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Question? Under additional conditions, second page of it, under four C, last sentence of the general financial obligation, seventy-six.
Okay.
General financial obligation shall be issued by the district of residence where the service is rendered under this agreement. One of the problems that used to exist was districts that didn't want to recognize their own obligation to a special education student and ship them off to another school district. I'm very familiar with this. And that statement bothers me a little bit. That, the screening process for inter-district agreements, if you have an autistic child that needs a one-one aid, and they're not recognizing that, then District X, and they transfer into Eureka City Schools, that becomes a huge financial liability.
Correct.
Liam, can you speak to it?
I'll, there's a couple of things. One is, certainly, a district can indicate, if we're the district of attendance and the district of residence has a special ed student with some significant special ed needs with a financial cost to those needs, but they don't have the program available, like a special day class, then we don't do an inter-district, but we'll place the student in like one of our special day classes through an IEP, but the district of residence remains fiscal responsibility. So that's one way we try to safeguard from that occurring. If however, the district of residence promotes an inter-district agreement, the only way we can really deny that is if it is an excess cost to the point like we have to open up a new program. So we've denied them, for example, if our resource numbers are, our special day classes are all filled to their max, we can deny an inter-district saying, we can't be forced to open up a new special day class. But if it's within our program availability. We have to do it. We can't discriminate based on disability unless there is definitely a, a significant increase in cost. Like I said, hi, having to hire a new teacher, having to open up a special day class, things like having to hire an aide, or having to provide other services have not been deemed excessive. When we did deny it, it was appealed and we did not prevail. But opening a program, we, we can say no.
So we have to take them.
Is there any mechanism for screening to make sure that sending districts are assuming their rightful responsibility?
Two things. One is, we have to have on the inter-district the fact that it's a special ed student. And we don't always get that information from the parents that are filling them out. Just like when a new parent registers, you don't always get the information that the student has an IEP until the cume arrives. So that, we really don't have a lot of control over. We have held inter-districts and not approved them until we know whether or not our programs can accommodate those. And I know Rich has done that this year, and I have done that in past years. And it's only until we know that we are going to not accrue excess costs like opening a program before we, you know, otherwise we'll just wait on the inter-district. We don't have to approve it immediately. We can assess what kind of fiscal responsibility or fiscal burden it places on the district. But you have to be very careful, because you can't discriminate based on disabilities. And historically, we don't. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I think we do the best we can. And sometimes it's, it's.
The liabilities that we've assumed over the years have been horrendous.
Yes, they have been.
And this statement bothers me inside of this agreement through the council.
It's already, though, the reality of it is, it's already on all inter-district agreements. Yeah, we, we used to have that the, we used to have on our inter-district agreements that, that special ed costs remain the financial responsibility of the sending district. But several years ago, the council suggested we strike that because of apparent discriminatory. So we have, we have not done that in the last several years.
Which is similar to my question on the next page seventy-seven. Is this the form that we have used in the past, or is this a new form?
It's a new form.
It's new for us, yeah.
And so where it says, please share here any other concerns regarding your students' needs specifically addressing participation in extracurricular activities, attendance, and behavior issues, and special education or gate needs. That's a choice to fill that spot in.
We'll find it filled in, but sometimes they'll put none.
None. And it, it says.
But that's not necessarily always accurate.
That's how our form is to read?
It read similar. You, they had to indicate whether or not their child was receiving special services or any additional.
They had to.
Mm-hmm. But again, some parents whose child might be getting some general ed reading support would interpret that as special ed. And sometimes they would have speech and they don't see that as special ed. So, you know, there was, there was, it wasn't always a hundred percent accurate. I would say for the most part, yes.
I share your concerns.
But on page seventy-seven refers to if one of both districts denied the permit. And what are the conditions for denying?
It's in the board policy.
There are several. And terms and conditions are listed at the top of page seventy-eight. When we get to the policy in our next conversation as well, we have the opportunity to, there's a checklist of several items that we have an opportunity to specify the reasons that we would accept a transfer or not accept a transfer.
I'll just put my two cents worth in on this. I, I shared my concern. And this is just kind of, I guess, I, I'm okay with what, with what we're doing and with the concept. I just have a little bit of a problem approving a, an agreement or contract, not knowing who we were doing, doing it with.
Without the list.
Yes, without attachment A. We're, it's kind of like signing the blank check and kind of, I had a little bit of an issue with that. But if the rest of the board's okay with that part of it, I'm, I'll go along.
I received a communication from Kim Cobine earlier today. She said that they expect all the districts in the county will approve the agreement. And it is important, I believe, that we have this, because if we don't have an agreement in place, then the inter-district permits between us and several other districts are invalid, according to the new law. And we would then have to enter into, we would have to draft a separate agreement with Cutton, a separate agreement with Garfield, a separate agreement with whoever. And, and the county is trying to facilitate our compliance with its new state law, with the master agreement. And, and they assure, I mean, part of the process is that after the action is taken by the school boards in the county, then vaporware, which comes to us, will have the names of the districts listed on the agreement.
And, yeah, it would be wonderful if it was just perfect, but it, things like this, so I understand.
And this wouldn't look much different than the individual ones that we would have to do if it weren't in this.
So, we don't all like everything, but it sounds like, do I have a motion to approve and execute the countywide agreement pertaining to inter-district attendance agreements within Humboldt County?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and execute the countywide agreement pertaining to inter-district attendance agreements within Humboldt County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
The next one follows the discussion. And unfortunately, this next item, it was like too fast going forward there. Would you like to introduce that, Judy?
I, I don't, I don't know.
We're referring to L20.
I'm sorry. You want me to go?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
L20, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation on Inter-District Attendance. New one.
And I will turn this conversation.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
So this, we get a chance to look at a proposed policy, and then we'll be bringing that back to the school board at the next meeting, after you have a chance to take a look at it this time for the first read. Now, I, I do need to caution you who have been working in the past with Greg and with me on bringing new policies to the school board for adoption. Usually, we pull something off of the CSBA model policy list. We put that in front of you. And it has several paragraphs that have suggested language, reasons why or why not we would take one or the other option. This is very different. The CSBA model does not, the latest CSBA model does not take into consideration the, the new law. The new law, which went into effect in January. They have not gotten around to putting one together. So, the legal team at County Office of Education put this policy together. And, and it does incorporate existing education code, forty-four six hundred. And it does incorporate certain elements from the county school board policy, which I'd like to draw your attention to. At the bottom of page eighty, there are three paragraphs there. These are priorities as expressed by County Board of Education. And they are asking that we also, and they're asking the other districts in the county, to also approve of these same priorities. Because as we make decisions ourselves, whether to accept or to deny inter-district agreements, based upon these priorities. based upon these priorities, and a family appeals to the county school board, then if we can say that it's consistent with county board priorities, it's stronger support at that end, if that ever occurs. The other thing I'd like to point out is at the top of, let's say, page eighty-one. I have my cheat notes on a separate piece of paper here. On page eighty-one, essentially those paragraphs state that we agree with county priorities and that we'll make our decisions with those priorities in mind. So this is the first part of the package, which is page and a half of board policy. So would you like to take a look at those three paragraphs which express the county board priorities?
I agree one hundred percent with them. I read them.
I, you're talking just eighty, page eighty and eighty-one?
That's right.
I agree with them. I just really don't like, I'm very uncomfortable with the way this is written. So, because I don't know that in any of our other policies, we've ever said we, we could just as easily not put county board in there. We could just say, "We recognize or we agree with these." This, it's kind of like tying us to that county board, and I've never seen that in any other policy. But here's, I have a feeling, I talked to Mickey about this, that maybe CSBA just isn't up to date yet. It takes some, so I'm okay with doing this, with approving this, with the understanding that when CSBA gets their policy in, let's put them together, and, yeah.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. When they get theirs in line, we'll do it the way we've always done it. It's easier for us, and that way we're sure that it's...
The language is just a little tighter.
And I think we're somewhat unique because the smaller districts don't, their board doesn't, they don't look at the appeal. They're not a part of an appeal. And so I think that's a little bit why you see some of the continuing to include the county. But on the other hand, if, if we deny it and the board upheld that denial, then all of our parents would go to the county anyway, so there is a connection.
Right, right. We'll just wait and see, and, yes.
But this could be...
We will. As soon as the CSBA model is available, we will look at it and compare it.
Yeah. I think if we handle it that way, that'll be fair.
We're good.
Then the next part of this, beginning on page eighty-two, addresses some of the questions that came up in the earlier discussion. On this page, the second paragraph, it states, "Unless the superintendent or designee determines the reasons for requesting the transfer are compelling, the superintendent or designee shall deny requests for interdistrict attendance permits for attendance in the district for any of the following." And you can briefly scan over those six items.
That's going to be a "shall" rather than "may"?
Superintendent or designee shall deny requests for any of the following reasons.
And "shall" means must.
Right. That's going to be a "shall," not a "may."
So there's no...
I guess unless you look at the front, the first part that says that the designee would have to determine that the reasons for requesting the transfer are compelling. And to me, I guess if the determination that the request is compelling, it would override the "shall." That's kind of how I read it, but I don't know if that's how you guys read it.
It addresses a special education issue, taking a look at number five or six. And we shall deny requests if the student needs a particular service or program, and the district does not offer that program. Or program's full or it comes over in the school year. In other words, if there's undue burden placed upon us, we shall deny the request. Number six, in order for the student to require the district to create a new program, we shall deny that request if that reason is present.
Excellent. That's the way I read it. It says, unless you find those compelling reasons, you will deny it. And that is the intention.
If it's a compelling reason for me, having had experience looking at whether to approve or deny under number six, it is, a compelling reason to me is that, is to not be discriminatory. And to me, that overrides some of these other factors.
And finally, I'd like to look at page eighty-three, please. There's a list. And at this point in time, I would ask that we indicate our preference, yes or no. And I have read these already. What it says, "Subject to foregoing exceptions," the exception we shall deny. "The superintendent or designee may approve an interdistrict permit for a student for any of the following reasons with a check and a yes block." So these are reasons. In other words, so that you're providing guides to us, the administration, these are reasons that we would accept transfer. And looking at those, have we recommended yes in each one of them? Although you may have some concerns with regard to Hank's concern earlier, especially on item number two, that might stick out like a red flag. But it's for the board to decide here and give us guidance on this.
So just for my clarification, is, is, once we decide yes or no on either one of those items, those would be criteria that we would apply?
That's right.
So for example, if for number eight, the board said, "No, any student coming in requesting an interdistrict, but he wasn't gonna, he was only going to live here for one year less," we would have to then deny that request based on this?
If we put no in the check.
If we put no, yeah, I just want to make sure that's how we're applying it. So if we say yes, then, then we're not using any one of these to be an automatic exclusion?
"May" approach in the first two.
Okay.
The first statement is "shall," and the second is "may." This gives you the wiggle room.
If you say yes to them.
So you're asking us if we want to eliminate one of these? I guess I'm not...
The recommendation I hear is that he would like you to say yes to all of them.
That is my recommendation, to say yes to all. But you have the option to say to any one of these, "No, that's not a good reason to let a kid into our district." And you have that option.
In which case then, would this be retyped up and not have these yes, nos on here? Or are you leaving them on here with these?
It would remain as is with a check mark in one of, in the appropriate box.
Oh, okay, okay.
And not only that these are the criteria for allowing a student to come into our district, but also for allowing a student to leave our district.
Correct.
I think people are doing all of these. I mean, when I read them through, it seemed like these are legitimate reasons parents give for taking their child away from Eureka City.
Eleven is a little iffy for me, but...
Which one?
Eleven is a little iffy for me, that's just...
Oh, I actually know some. I know of...
I would say definitely that is...
Number eleven.
Actually, a statement that parents use often. And sometimes it's for peer reasons. They want their child to move away from a particular peer group after it's more at the secondary level, I would say. But I certainly have seen, even known at the fourth grade level, I remember.
As a clarification, obviously, at high school, we look at incoming ninth graders. And when I look at this, you know, we have parents, let's say I want my student to go to Arcade High School, for example. And sometimes it's because they were going, had lived in there, and then we had an interest in transfer to stay at Pacific Union or something. And we want them to, to go, or they were in freshwater, and we want them to continue with their peers.
That would qualify under number eleven. And I would say that, that already occurs.
Okay, and so...
What I would say, just based on having done this for the past forty years, these are all very common reasons and rationale that parents provide. So I think that's what they did, is sort of the collective analysis of the most common reasons, and made that a little bit...
Okay, so we put a yes in each checkbox. And then finally, model figure eighty-four is about the reason we would revoke an interdistrict permit. As permitted by law, an interdistrict attendance, look, there's a typo. Attendance permit may be revoked pursuant to policies and regulations of either approved district and any applicable terms and conditions. Grounds for revocation of the permit include, but may not be limited to, there are strict in number. Failure of a student to obtain satisfactory academic progress. Fallow established rules of conduct, maintain regular attendance. Those are critical behaviors that we look for when students come and go. Failure of a student to comply with any additional terms and conditions set forth to permit. You might recall looking at the, the last and previous items, there were a couple of boxes where the district residence of the district had attendance providing additional conditions. Three, if the material information provided is discovered to be false or misleading. Four, if parent or guardian is unwilling to provide or arrange for transportation. Or five, if the conditions on which the approval were based are no longer met, including a change occurring in the parent/gartner's appointment or the student's daycare. Or determination by the district of attendance that the continuing presence of a student is not in student's best educational interest or will interfere with the needs of other students or others. So the policy allows us to revoke interdistrict permits. Students coming into our district, among the districts.
We always had that. We always had that.
Okay. We will put this up and send on the next...
I'd like to make a comment. One of the things that has been a goal in the past is to kind of get interdistricts under control. This policy and administrative regulation basically doesn't do that. It leaves plenty of latitude to hang yourself. I don't know if that's a bad idea, but it, it leaves it out there to be abused or enforced rigidly.
There are five...
Which direction from us?
There are five different state laws with regard to interdistrict enrollment. Each based upon a different purpose or a different reason. But in the past several years, things have opened up, loosened up quite a bit with regard to interdistrict enrollment. There are districts of choice, there's open enrollment laws, and of course, the parents can claim place of employment as a reason. There are a lot of ways that students can leave our district. And I, and I absolutely agree with you that it is a concern. And, and I look at it as though what we need to be doing is try to figure out, what do we have to offer? What is a draw? What can draw students to our district or keep students in our district? But I, I don't think we're going to be tightening down on the state's open enrollment laws ourselves.
Look, control doesn't exist very much.
And I remember, we looked into this once before. When Greg Aslanian worked with the county to see if we could work on a way of not granting a lot of interdistricts. And there wasn't, it wasn't...
Got to figure out a way to make them not to stay, rather than...
There wasn't a way to do it. They really worked on it, so...
Keep them here against their will.
Exactly. The laws and parents feeling that they should, you know, have the right to put their children where they want to.
And I can say, I'm very thankful for that because I've brought my children here. So if they wouldn't have let me leave that district, then they wouldn't have been educated in Eureka City schools. And I'm darn glad they have been, just on the other side. I've been appreciative that I've been able to bring my child in, and grandchild.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay. We'll move to L-21, beginning of school year report.
I guess that was the best introduction yet. I know. So actually, I am going to have two people speak to this. Charlie's going to speak to the facility maintenance projects that have been done. And then Rich will discuss the centralized registration as well as enrollment and attendance. So I'm pleased to turn it over to Mr. Bettini and thank him for being here.
Good evening. At the beginning of June, I gave the board a list of summer maintenance projects, some of the highlights that were completed. I believe you guys have that. Alice Burney, we did get the ceiling mounted projectors in. We also had Summer Hire paint the upper wing and poles throughout Alice Burney's site. We made the grant ceiling projector mounts in as well. We installed the new key system at Lafayette. We're currently still working at the district office move, installing cabinets in phase one and two. Phase three, we have poured the footings for the two hour wall, and we'll be putting in the stud walls next week. We will also be having John Gilmore from LPA up next Wednesday as well. The duplicating shop at P-18 has been completed. We have not moved in yet, but just wrapped up with tech and wiring the security alarm in. One of our tougher projects was the scoreboard at the baseball field with our quicksand and low water table there. We did get that in and completed and operating. We also left the original sign above. That was not part of the original project, but we kind of decided it looked better with that. So if we want that removed, we could. But as this time, we've left the original sign in. Another major project was the completion of the auditorium, reinstalling seating in that facility. At Washington, we built a resource office inside the library and ran some water to affordable for another program on that site. Also attached was our daily work order program, I believe the board received, which listed our day-to-day duties throughout the summer that started from June through the end of August. So in addition to our major projects, we have ongoing maintenance items that occur throughout the year. This work order program was just installed last year. And so to give the board kind of a more thorough peek of what's going on this summer, we attached that.
That's nice.
Thank you.
Yes.
It was, it was dogged.
It is. They work hard.
Hi. So construct an office in the library at Eureka High, an RST office?
That was at Washington.
Oh, that was at Washington?
In the library.
I mean, is that like full walls, or is that...
We put in two walls, a door, outlets, switched the lighting system so that it had a separate lighting system from the library.
Has a window. That gave us an extra classroom, and we needed it for enrollment.
Oh. Huh. Okay.
So it actually turned out very nice.
Okay, okay.
Isn't it for the special ed? Isn't it...
For the resource program?
Resource program.
Yeah, and typically...
Very small. It's not a huge, big classroom.
It's not, but it's comparable to other... Yeah, it wasn't like we took the library and cut it in half.
But it is, and it doesn't really take away from the library. I didn't think, I actually was over there looking at it. It seemed it was very nicely done, and...
It was very nicely done.
And that library isn't open all the time anyway, so the resource person...
Well, in my opinion, what we did is we took the library part where it used to have, I guess, cubicles or storage. I mean, in some ways, it was a part of the library that wasn't being very well utilized. So we kind of took that corner out.
Okay.
And made it in that area. So it didn't really, in my opinion, we moved bookcases a little bit, but it didn't really impact the, where the library books are, or the students' ability to access their library books.
In fact, if you didn't know it was added to it, you would have thought...
Right.
That it was there all the time. It's very well done. Good job, Charlie. Good job, Charlie.
And I just noted this extensive list of work orders only covers the period of the end of June through the end of August. This is just three months of summer work orders when school is not in place.
Again, we've been a little over a year now, and I think we just entered in our nineteen-hundred numbers. And when the sites get on, because we haven't got all sites on electronic system yet, they'll be able to look at work orders that have been completed and that are still out there. So, it'll give them a true picture as well of what's going on at their site. They won't get the whole picture, so.
Okay. What's happening at the home ec rooms? I heard there, something's happening at the home ec rooms in the high school? They're not usable?
We started demolition, and maybe that would be a better question to ask Rick. We started and then we kind of got hung up a little bit, and I'm not quite sure where we're at with that. But there was, you know, again, some funding. We were going to look at contracting out some of the electrical work. We lost our electrician for a good portion of the summer. He has pancreatic cancer.
Oh, dear.
So, we were expecting him back in November, but that's kind of a little bit right now outside of our scope of work that we can do. But we did do some demo work and some exploratory stuff, and there was some outlining of where the equipment was going to go. And that's kind of where I've got it right now, so.
Okay. I'll have to ask Rick, why?
The county received a grant, and we're working with the LEAP program that already exists. And part of the grant pays for is to support kids that are struggling in retarded areas in mathematics. The grant they wrote was for hands-on support in mathematics, and they wrote it to have kids take a culinary supplement. And so, the basic plan has a person that through ROP will be hired as a culinary instructor to work side-by-side with the math teacher. And during those support classes that we have already in place for Algebra I, we'll teach part of that and then use some of the hands-on applications to explore some of those math concepts that they're studying in the Algebra I class. The upside to that is that there is money in that grant to do the work that Charlie was referring to, and the district has committed to part of the funding for that. But essentially, to reestablish the culinary classroom and the room that it was supposed to go into, the large remodel that was on the books three years ago, I believe. But then, when the culinary project was pulled from Eureka High School. So, it'd be a reuse of that equipment that has never been installed. So, we have a plan to do that. Everything is sort of on hold because it's the start of the year and the grant, and the partners that we have at the county understand that. And so, we're to a point though where we can now get back into it. We knew that we were not going to have the staffing available from our school district to do that work until, at the earliest, probably sometime after Halloween, really looking into late November at the earliest. And so, we're still on pace to be there, but it really is pushing our capacity around the work that the crew's been doing. And we know that, and the county knows that. And so, we would hope that sometime towards the end of the second quarter, that we would have that space reestablished and then begin using it to support those kids that are in that math program. The second year, the grant allows us to do some other work with ag. It really ties nicely with the twenty-twenty grant and the Man Humble Project in the areas of career growth and the county. And so, we're very excited. It's, you know, we'd love to have it all done, ready to go. The grant happened, it was written quickly, and we were awarded it, or the county was awarded it. And so, now there's been a little bit of a backwards plan that has resulted from it. But we got the money, which was fantastic, and eventually, we'll have that classroom back.
Is there a time limit or do we have to get it going?
There's, the grant actually runs out in, I believe it is, coming up in April of 2013.
Okay, so, what I think, third quarter, there's no time limit that we have to have it up and going? And I'm actually.
No.
That's what I was worried about, that they wouldn't take it away from you if you didn't have it.
No, and I just didn't have it.
Thank you.
It wasn't a very nice gift. It sort of was just falling in our lap.
Really?
We did, you know, no work on the front end of it.
And it's such a good idea.
I could use four or five of those.
Thank you, Charlie, for all your work and your, everyone's auditorium's work.
Yeah, our staff's up along the way.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the beginning of the floor, centralized registration is what they were going to discuss next.
May I jump to the other one? The numbers?
Sure. Sure, the enrollment and attending stuff.
Sorry. Spill all over. Uh-oh.
So, this blue sheet going around is a summary of a couple of things that's suicide. If we take a look at the landscape side first, please. This shows elementary enrollments, seats available, numbers of registered students, and the seats that are still available. This tells us how much room is still available if students want to transfer in.
Wow. Huh.
And it points out, I think, we made a last-minute decision to open up three K-one combination classes, and had we not done that, we would not have been able to accommodate the students that registered. And the other side shows a three-year summary of enrollment. Thank you, Cheryl Smith, for putting the numbers together for us, showing us as of the ninth day of school for each of the past three years. And we can see an interesting trend here. And especially going from last year at the elementary level, last year to this year, we gained ninety-two students.
Wow.
From last year to this year, K-six. And Zane has dropped from the previous two years, a much larger drop this year than last year. Overall, we are slightly above the net effect, in other words, slightly above the attendance, the enrollment that we had in the prior year. So, it's nice to see this upward trend at the elementary level.
Yeah, hundred down at the high school.
Our classes, interestingly enough, are within one or two students mark equal. And so, the graduating class last year, class of two thousand and eleven, same size as the incoming class. Usually, that ninth grade class is.
Smaller.
Yeah. And so, all of the classes are right around three oh five to three ten, somewhere in that range. They're very close. It's.
That is good news.
We don't want any attrition from that freshman class. I guess that's really what it boils down to.
You mentioned seats available, and they don't always come where you need them and where you.
Isn't that the truth?
You've got a little problem forever. Capacity of the different schools versus their enrollment. You didn't really address that.
What I could say, just having worked, all of us together, trying to make sure that all kids had a place to go to school, it varies. Some of the schools have capacity in fourth and fifth grade, some might in second and third. Again, like you said, it's not like you can say, okay, we have at every grade level four kids at every school site or four seats available. What we can say, I think, is K-one and six and fifth overall, well, K-one obviously is the tightest for us. And then, it just kind of depends on the site.
When we get to the facilities workshop, though, we will be talking about school capacity.
Yes, absolutely.
Although, I will say, I found out, because I always wanted very concrete answers for that, to that. And I can remember working with Bob Munther, who gave me a nice little overview of how it depends on how many students you want to put in a classroom.
Right.
Some classrooms, you know, what's by contract and what's by, you know, and what grades do you put in these rooms and what grades do you put in these? So, it was not easy.
And what did the state come up with within, consent us to have twenty, excuse me, something else?
Right, right. CSR.
Do we have any schools that have vacant classrooms?
Classrooms that don't have any programs in at all? No.
No. I guess what I meant was, do we have any, any school, any of our schools that have a room that is not being used as a classroom?
No. All of our rooms are being used as a classroom. In fact, we looked at whether or not even classrooms might be available that had support programs like reading intervention or resource or something like that. And all of our regular square footage classrooms are being by, being used by classes, maybe special day and general ed, but it's not like speech has their own classroom and resources have their own classroom, and the reading intervention teacher has their own classroom.
Washington with this office within the library basically added a classroom.
Correct.
It would indicate that that is getting close to some.
I would say they're pretty close to capacity right now. Well, except for the openings that they would have in particular classes at particular grades.
Will we be getting the numbers as to how many students there are at each school and each classroom?
Mm-hmm.
We have that. I didn't want to end up, you know, teaching too many numbers tonight, so I kind of held back, but we can do that.
Yeah, because we've always added it at the beginning of the school year.
Well, it goes to the issue of facilities.
Yeah, it does, right.
And also, how many, you know, how many stu, do we have thirty in a classroom?
Right.
That sort of thing.
We do have that information. And like Hank said, I absolutely think it's going to be critical information when we look at facilities.
Okay. And just, I mean, I know our elementaries are essentially full, but Zane, we were always told, could house nine hundred students.
Correct.
So, we only have six thirty-two. So, there's space there somewhere. It's just, may not be a completely empty classroom.
Yeah. And I guess I should clarify, it was K-six I was primarily talking about in terms of facility. I would say at the secondary level, there would be classrooms that would be available to have different utilization. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Now, I want to miss an opportunity to again, make it clear that I strongly disapprove of mixed combo classes, and K-one is one of the ones I like least, and that if at all possible, we bend over backwards to avoid that, especially K-one. And I know it's, I know the dilemma, but again, not my favorite thing.
I would say it's not any of our favorite thing at all. We, if we had not done that, we probably would have lost thirty students, I would say, something roughly.
I just can't pass up the chance to.
I know. It's something we always need to be aware of. Combination classes are difficult. One of the things that we did is each site administrator indicated what level of support they were going to give for that K-one class, above and beyond what other combination or other classes might give. And they all did do that.
Do we have any other combos?
We have some four-fives and a five-six, I believe.
There's two four-fives?
I don't remember right offhand. You have one, and Washington has one, and you have a four-five and a five-six, and Washington has a four-five, I believe, or five-six.
Five-six.
Five, they're both.
Those are so hard.
Okay.
Sounds like we should be lining up some K-six portables for next year.
No, you move the sixth grade to Zane.
Wait, I think that would be one of the things we'd, that's part of our facility conversation, absolutely. Because I think this incoming seventh grade is about forty students less than the current eighth grade class at Zane. And so, one would project that our numbers at Zane will even be lower, and we really probably should look at what we want to do.
Okay. Well, let's move on to, what's the next one? Centralized registration?
Right. The other part of the, welcome back to school. So, as we were preparing to move out of the district office, and as we were gearing up for the start of school, as we were upgrading Power School to a new version of Power School, we also embarked on a new plan for centralized registration, centralized enrollment. And what I'm presenting here is a summary of information that cabinet members have collected, talking with our staff, and Cheryl Smith and I, working closely together in this registration process to make things work. And we wanted to provide you with an overview and a summary. To begin with, the need for centralized registration. Many external factors influenced our decision to allocate a portion of a staff's time at the district office to be devoted to centralized registration. They're listed there, and we can come back and we can discuss, and I'll answer questions if you have any on these. I want to try to move through this. There were also some internal factors, need for consistency, need for complete paperwork, need to keep class sizes within contractual limits, and our need to predict staffing and to adjust in a timely fashion. For these reasons, we made the decision to embark on centralized registration. Future plans include combining our required activity language assessment of students who have a home language other than English to be provided at the same length, at the same location, by the same person even, upon new student enrollment. That, we didn't embark upon that right now. That's an ambitious undertaking, but that is part of our future plan for centralized registration. Difficulties that have been occurring with the old system, site-based management, you can see a long list there. Basically, loosely organized system meant site staff were following directions from district office staff differently, different interpretations of guidance that was provided. So, I'll give you just a moment to kind of glance over that list of difficulties.
Do you want us to ask questions, if we have a question now or wait till the end?
I just want to give you time to take a look at that. And then, if we can move on to page two. Benefits of centralized enrollment. Essentially, it is, our goal is to get consistent, complete, and correct information into our database. And if we do it properly, it will require less time on the part of site staff, which will free them up to perform other important tasks at the start of the school year. It will even out the enrollment between schools. Data on students will be enrolled accurately. It will eliminate redundancy, which we found in the system. Required forms will be completed and data entered into Power School correctly. We will follow the board policy priorities to ensure equitability. We have policy five-one-one-six-point-one that clearly delineates priorities for student enrollment, and so, we need to make sure that we follow those in an equitable and consistent fashion throughout the entire district. And we'll be better able to predict and adjust the number of classes per grade and teacher assignments in a timely fashion. Those are the benefits that we see with centralized enrollment. Now, we know that this transition occurred without some hitches. And there's a list of some things there. We started registering students for the new school year in the spring, last spring, using the old way, the site-based way. Then, we switched to a centralized system on July first. District staff were not adequately trained at that time. There was inconsistency in messages that were going out. And you can see the rest of the things on the list. And basically, there was lack of a clearly articulated transition plan, how we were going to go from the way things were to the way things ought to be. It was not, the pathway was not clearly spelled out. So, what did we learn? That we need to increase staff working on the process at the district office for a few days before and a few days immediately after school starting up. Need to more thoroughly train new staff assigned on how to enroll students in Power School. Need to more thoroughly train new staff assigned on how to enroll students in Power School and how to assist parents to complete paperwork. Managing change on two levels is very complex. This is something that we learned. It's kind of like, well, why did it take so hard to learn that? We need to be prepared well ahead of time. This whole thing was more complex than we thought it would be. There was a major upgrade of Power School, as I indicated before, because we have to comply with state Cal pads. And the Power School providers itself, the system, provided us with a major upgrade. And so, and that took place during two weeks, two and a half weeks during the summer. It gave us very little time after Power School was finally upgraded. And all of the old information was migrated over into, into the new Power School. We had very little time then to get up to speed with registration. So that's why I say it was complex. We were trying to do some, a lot of complex things at the same time. So we also learned that we need earlier communication to parents regarding the overall process, centralized enrollment. We need earlier communication to parents regarding the outcomes. In other words, we need to notify parents more quickly as to when their placements, when the students' placements occur. And on the last page, there is a proposal for regi-, for centralized registration for the 2012-13 school year, the following year. Because if, if we don't take some time now to put down and writing, what did we learn from this process? And going forward, then, then we're probably going to make the same mistakes again. So we've got listed there several items, proposal for kindergarten registration 2012. And we open that up. And we give a longer period of time before we close the registration date. And one of the options that we are suggesting is that we close the registration about two weeks before the start of school, in the sense that at that point in time, we want to capture what we have so that we can begin to honor the board priorities. Board priorities being students who reside within the attendance area of that school, they get first priority. The second priority is there are some laws that, that give students the option to transfer because of schools and program improvement, special circumstances such as a court order, a special needs student. Another priority is students who have siblings in the same school. See, they get, they get, those are lower on, on the priority list. And then finally, student's parent is assigned there because of their employment. It's the place of employment. These exist, these priorities exist in current board policy five one one six point one. And so we would, we tried to use those as guides this year, but because we started out as a site-based system, it's like everybody was following the policy in their own way and in their own time. And we, we need to add some consistency to that. After a certain date, such as two weeks before the start of school year, or the end of the first week of August, we establish a date and after that, then we conduct a lottery. If there are more applications for a particular school, then, in other words, if there's still some room, but there are more applications than we can provide for people at a particular school, we would conduct a lottery. So I'd be very happy to answer questions.
Seems like in many ways, I mean, I was putting myself in, you know, as a parent, and I wanted an inter-district transfer. Even if I did the work early, you're making me wait until two weeks before school. In some ways, that discourages people from, I mean, you know, I, I don't think I can take it. I couldn't, I couldn't take the not knowing until that time. And I mean, maybe that's what we want to do. I don't, I don't know, but I.
I think to some degree that's consistent with what the theater schools are currently doing. Most students that are requesting an inter-district to go from our district to one of those theater schools, they usually don't get nailed with that, whether or not those inter-districts have been approved until some time has passed. And they do it by lottery too. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, it's, it, it's.
Now, once my child, if I make it, I really want this school, school X. And so I wait the two weeks. My child gets in. From that point forward, do I have to go through that every year?
You would be the concurrent of all students.
Then I'm good. I, I can.
Right, yes.
All right, cool. Just thought I'd check. And then no shows, you're, you're going to, site staff holding spaces for no shows, but you're going to make them hold that space for five days?
Ten.
Five days, that's a recommendation.
Wow. I, I would, I again, just based on my want to be in the district, that's pretty much what we've been doing, general of them. Some, some sites drop in the first day, others want to keep them for three weeks. So it seemed like a practice of five days was kind of a.
I'm wa-, I'm wondering, because of the school calendar, I mean, I did, you know, when we start early, there are parents who do not even get their kids there until, you know.
Absolutely.
So if we're going to hold for five days, does that discourage them or encourage them to just say, I'm just not, I know I'm holding, my spots are held for five days, so I'm not sending my kid to school until the basement is. I don't know. Maybe that's not the practice and maybe.
I said, wouldn't, wouldn't want our extended, but if you consider to decrease it to like three days or something like that. And the parents know, if you aren't there early in the first day of school, you basically have lost your seat.
Yeah, we, the proposal here, things, they're not set in stone. And we'll be continuing the conversation with Kevin and with elementary principals. So your feedback, your comment, your questions are taken seriously.
My concern has more to do with parents who are not engaged and come in at the last moments. It came up, it's, it's usually considered a west side of town. To say, okay, you guys perhaps go to the district office or whatever that may be okay to get this process done. There are hurdles for those parents to overcome. This is a, on paper, it looks like a great system. It's, it's a very powerful way to have all your data correct and all your entry stuff. But it's not current, it's not getting kids to the right places. I, I'm very concerned that it's an institutional answer, not a parent answer. It's not a site answer. We want our sites to be friendly, people.
Community hubs.
Community hubs is the term. And now we're saying, nope, nope, can't deal with you here. Go downtown. And that is opposed to everything I think we're talking about doing. So I'm not impressed. And I don't favor the centralized approach unless we love, I somehow work with sites to get them more involved to handle these people coming in. So the kids get in class, the kids get engaged day one. They're not sent off somewhere else because of parents effects.
One of the things that relocation to Marshall is going to be a more central location. And it'll be a lot easier for parents to get there in the future. I know that it's difficult to get parents out there.
I've heard that. And I understand that there, it is a more central location. But if your school is Alice Bernie, getting A word with Alice Bernie is a huge hurdle. If you had a car and mechanisms and you're engaged with your child's education, it's not a big deal.
I like the plan. Okay. So the one thing that Judy mentioned was we should be encouraging more inter-incoming to this agreement and making them wait till two weeks. Seems like we discourage some of them. There was something we could do.
And part of that to me was.
Prepare them earlier.
And I would say historically, we've been able to do that. What we noticed is that we had so many of our own kids trying to find them a place to attend school. That was our priority. And, and that hasn't been the case historically. We have space available for both all our, lots of anybody else's. But one of the reasons why we found we had to pull on to some of the inter-districts without approving them is to make sure that all the kids that live in our resident boundary areas were registered and in class with a place. And that was a new experience for me, anyway, who's been there more than a year or two. So I think that's one of the reasons why we don't want to approve an inter-district and then find out that our resident student who waited till the last minute now doesn't have a place.
I have, in fact, the top of page three, there's a quote there of our existing board policy. That students from outside the district are allowed to displace students from the district, as in our first board policy. So we have this dilemma. And it was also pointed out to you that twenty-three percent, almost a quarter of our, Cheryl, was it?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, thank you, registered after July first. And so we, we faced this difficulty, how, you know, asking ourselves the question, why do we have students in a particular grade at a school who are from out of the district when there are people who live two blocks from Alice Bernie and can't get in? You know, that, that posed a problem. So it's a.
I understand that.
Where do we set, where do we draw the line? Where do we set that, that point in time?
Would that be one advantage to moving sixth graders back to Zane? And that there'd be plenty of room at the elementaries and then push that two weeks back, three or four or five or something.
Certain of the outcome, because right now we're so impacted with students, particularly a primary grade. It's, it's resulted in us having to be a little bit more critical in placing kids and registering kids. If we had empty classrooms, it wasn't a problem.
It's amazing to think we've come kind of full circle to where we're trying to grab every student we can get our hands on. And now we're saying, I don't think we have rooms. I, I was at, well, all the elementary schools and the first day of school and I went first day. The, the way this is set up, I like this because it says what we tried to do, what we didn't do. And right here in black and white, it says how we messed that up. And that, that is, I like to see it written on paper like this. And we know what we did wrong. And here we are, itemizing an outcome. This is how we're going to avoid this problem. And next time, I have to agree with Hank though, it takes away from that community involvement. And I mean, registering your kid for their first day of school happened on the school site. And I, I see those sides of the coin. It's the need for better controls, a better system, definitely not having people wait. And, but I saw some really frustrated parents. I heard about some really frustrated office staff on the first day of school. A parent out in the hallway and he was saying to his wife, I mean, on the phone, I overhear this conversation. He says, they can't tell me if there is a place. These people went to, they were in a, they were in a car housing directly across the street from Latvia and we're still being told on the first day of school, I don't know if my child is going to school here. So, and, and I see that it's, it's right here in black and white that we understand that's a problem, but it takes that. But if there is some possibility of having a dual registration where at least maybe just the paperwork can be entered so that there's a human contact on the school site and we will transfer that information to the district before you get your answer. So it's still handled at the district, it's still part of that centralized system, but that interaction happens, that can happen if we need to. But it's like, I mean, I don't know if that's possible or practical.
accuracy issue.
Let's look at age for.
It goes back to an institutional answer versus a community hub.
So on a minor point, has duplicate registrations been eliminated?
Yes, they have.
Okay, so parents aren't.
And Jane, our best.
Have you registered every side?
Yes.
Great. Well, eliminates one issue that was a significant one. Here's, here's the. Okay, so I imagine we're going to be hearing about this future agenda.
You will hear about it again.
This is great.
We will continue the conversation.
Any questions for anyone in the audience or not? Thank you, Rich. And I think that does us the beginning of the school year, that report. So we now move to accountability measures. I want to.
Yeah, I, this is really exciting to share this with you. And I apologize, apparently the actual test score reports didn't get on your board packet?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Because it's really exciting to know how well we did. And it's great to get to go out speaking on this up and up. Also handing, handing out to you this beige set of material, which is a kind of cheat sheet, some of the terms that we're going to be looking at.
I think it's work for all of us.
If we, first of all, take a look at the beige one. First page, there's a list of abbreviations. You can get through the alphabet soon. And then if you.
Thank you.
If you want more detail, if you really want to delve into what those things mean, pages two through six are some definitions of the terms that we'll be using here. But it's fun stuff to look at the, the white handouts that I hand out. I'm going to quickly go over this. On the California Standards Tests, which are grades given in grades two through eleven in language arts, math, social science, and science, we have seen steady growth over the past five years for all students combined in both language arts and math. For language arts, the percent proficient and advanced is fifty-three percent. And in mathematics, it is fifty-two percent. So it's slightly above the midpoint. Best performance in language arts is the white subgroup, sixty percent. Best performance in math is the white subgroup of fifty-seven percent. And there are many of the subgroups that are below the district average. So that's just a very quick overview of the California Standards Tests. On the second page is the academic performance index. And I'm going to just, I'm going to try to fly through this and then let you ask questions. So the academic performance index, this is the state's accountability for schools. First thing to look at is the 2010 base API. We'll just take, take a look at Zane Middle School, a good example. Base API is seven eighty-six. Growth in the middle column is fifty-two API points. And their 2011 growth API score is now eight thirty-eight. Reason to congratulate staff at Zane, they are now in the eight hundreds.
Yeah.
As we also see, Washington has maintained their status in the eight hundreds, they're at eight forty-three. And Grant, Grant moved into the eight hundreds.
Wow.
With an increase of twenty-four points, they're at eight twelve. Zooparam, quite an impressive gain there as well, seventy-one point improvement. So, so far, we, we're beginning to get a picture, beginning to get a feel that we're doing some good things. We're making some good progress in our district.
What happened at the high school?
What happened at high school? I'm here to listen, I'm not...
The, one of the theories that's out there is that there are two measures that students at Eureka High help us with to, to look good with test scores. One is the California Standards Test, given to grades nine, 10, and 11. And the other is the California High School Exit Exam. We'll get to that in a minute. The students know darn well that it's really important to do well in the high school exit exam because if you don't pass that one, you don't graduate. The other test, I'm not so sure how seriously they take it. And this is a problem not just for Eureka High. I've encountered that at other high schools. But it contributes, both of those contribute to the API. On the bottom of page two, Adequate Yearly Progress. That is the federal accountability measure that brought, that was brought up by No Child Left Behind. What we see here is a table of our district-wide performance. And one of the reasons I want us to pay attention to the district-wide performance is because, as I said a couple of years ago, we're all in this together. So Eureka High is not a Title I school. They're not going to be held accountable to this. But they have students who contribute to the district profile. The district is held accountable. This shows three years. Now, the nice thing is, is that there are more grade spans that have met the targets this last year than in the prior years. At three grade spans, we met the targets. That wasn't the case. In 2010, only one grade span. And in 2009, only one grade span. And you can see the two years in a row in language arts where we missed the targets at all three grade spans. That's why we advanced in program improvement as a district. What our goal is, is to get a yes, yes, yes. Two consecutive years. On page three, here we'll take a look at the California High School Exit Exam and in two different ways. The top shows the percent of 10th graders scoring at the proficient level district-wide. The proficient level is a much higher score than simply passing for graduation. The proficient score is 385 scaled score. To pass for graduation, a student only has to get a 350 on the casey. And so, we have, we see 2009, 10, and 11, three years again. Take a look at all students in language arts. From 57% up to 63, then up to 64. So all students at Eureka High have improved in terms of reaching that proficient level, which is what, which is how the federal government holds the district accountable for reaching that higher level. And you look at the middle part of the page there, language arts, Eureka High, went up from 83% passing to 87% passing. And this is not all students. Please keep in mind, we're only looking at 10th graders here. Because eventually, just about all the kids will pass the casey and graduate. But this is just a snapshot looking at 10th graders. Graduation rates, we've seen improvement there as well. So so far, mostly we're talking about improvement. Even though we saw the API at Eureka High, there was a dip. But on the high school exit exam, kids are doing better. They know, they know how important that is. Graduation rates, district has been improving greatly since three years ago. And same with Eureka High.
Maybe it's the testing.
Has the, the definition for these purposes, has that changed?
The, the state and feds keep playing with graduation rate. And we're going to be moving into a new era, so they're going to be reporting it out in two ways. But what's shown here is, it is the number of students who graduated divided by a long set of numbers. The number who graduated plus the number who dropped out at each grade level in the previous years. So you have a pretty large denominator there. So the number who graduate in particular divided by the number of graduates plus the number of dropouts. And that's a pretty consistent method that's been used for a number of years now. So that's how we get the graduation rate. I don't know, is that similar to what you...
Well, I just wondered if the data for these three years wasn't calculated the same way?
Same way, yes, in all three years.
Yeah, that's all.
And finally, on the last page, Title I schools and adequate yearly progress. This is where a number of schools can really stand up and take credit. Number of principals, I should say. Grant, they met their targets in both language arts and math and they held, held off the accountability wolves. They're still not in PI, which is great. Lafayette met their targets and they're still on hold at year one. Washington met their targets and they remain not in program improvement. Zane Middle School met their targets and they're on hold at year three. What that means for Lafayette, what it means for Zane is that one more year like this, meeting targets, and then they're out of program improvement. And that will be a cause for celebration. And, you know, I think the teachers are keenly aware of that. I was talking with a few teachers at Zane Middle School the other day. They're pumped up. They're excited about this. They're pumped up. They want to have a repeat year meeting their targets. And, you know, it means a lot to them. And finally, Title III accountability data for the English learner program. There are two measures of how will children attain English proficiency. The first is they're required to increase a level of proficiency each year as measured by the CECL, the California English Language Development Test. The other measure is from a certain group of kids, pre-identified group of kids who would be expected to attain proficiency. The question is, what percentage actually do attain proficiency? So you can see the, the yeses indicate the schools and in the target areas where the targets were met for English learners. So we, this points out, we still have a long ways to go with helping this group of students attain proficiency in English. And it's a pretty significant group for Eureka, as small as we are as a district. They're about 12%, I think. Around 12% of the population are English learners.
It's great news.
What's the percentage of EL students at Alice Bernie versus Washington? Much more.
Forty-four percent at Alice Bernie.
It's a tough run.
It is. But a lot of hard work went into this, so, I mean...
People worked really hard.
All those schools.
To, to hit their targets. Providing interventions for students, implementing the core curriculum, data team conversations, instructional coaching. There were a lot of, a lot of things that combined to cause this movement forward. And it really is exciting and it's cause to celebrate. There's, you know, there's places where we can improve, but overall, there's been a tremendous amount of growth.
And it helps to validate the direction, I mean, the work.
It absolutely does.
Because often, you know, you're, you're working really hard and you don't know. Is this really going to pay off? And this seems to show that it, it does.
Really pays off.
That's great. Wonderful. Questions? Okay, questions? Anybody, board or audience? Okay. All right, we have no further closed session. And I think I will now adjourn the very last meeting of the Eureka City School Board in the Walford Avenue building. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Are we taking the new clocks with us?
Absolutely.
Okay.